Like to call to order the meeting of the Board of Commissioners for the town of Mint Hill, North Carolina for February ninth, 2023. We do have a quorum present. I'd like to ask Commissioner Long to deliver our invocation at this time, please.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this opportunity to come together tonight. Thank you for watching over us as we go through the day and as we depart this place. Please be with those in other parts of the world that have been struck with tragedy in the last few days and provide comfort for them in the best way you can. We have no idea what that's like. Please help us make the correct decisions as we go through the deliberation of the business of the town tonight. It will be fair to each one involved. We ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Item number three, additions, deletions, or arrangement of agenda items. Hearing done. Item number four, approve the minutes of the January 12th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number five is a consent agenda. Item A, accept Bel Glade Streets for town maintenance. B, accept partial Summerwood Streets for town maintenance.
Motion to accept.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number six, I'm now going to open the public hearing on ZC 23-1 filed by LRH Holdings LLC for tax parcel number 135-381-60 to request permission to develop the property for commercial slash office building with associated parking frontage to exceed code requirements, property located at 11110 Lawyer's Road. If the applicant can come forward to the podium, please, and once you get there, if you would give us your name, your address, please, then you have the floor.
All right. Yeah, my name is Colin Brock. My address, 324 Wellingtonshire Court, Matthews, North Carolina. And I am one of the managing partners at V3 Civil Engineering and Landscape Architecture Firm that's working on the project. So we can kind of briefly go over the site. Yeah, the site is somewhat of a by right zoning. The main reason for rezoning the site is, as you mentioned, the parking is exceeding the 25% minimum across the entire frontage. So we're proposing a, if you can go to the site plan, we can kind of go through the site, but mainly through the requirements of the 25% and also the corner of the building is not at the corner, so we're moving that off. But overall, the site conditions existing along Evans Road and Lawyer's Road, and there's an existing stream along the, do I have the ability to, is there an arrow that I can move the next slide down?
Spacebar.
Spacebar. There we go. All right. Oh yeah, I'll go through the project team. So again, my name is Colin Brock. Our other project manager is Austin Coleman. The architect is Terry Knarren with Capital Architecture Group, and the property owner is Roy Messer of Messer Financial Group, who's also here. So yes, so going through this, we have 6.02 acres located here, just pretty close to where we are standing, so just on the corner of Evans and Lawyer's Road. As I was mentioning, you know, currently has a house site on it. There's a stream which has been delineated. It is a intermittent stream, and we plan to stay out of that stream in its entirety. You see here, this actually, even though this is GIS, that stream does not do that weird kind of hook. It actually kind of keeps continuing all the way through to the site. And you can kind of see the tree canopy there along that. Everything south of the stream will be protected from the tree's canopy standpoint. So here we have the site plan. You can kind of see Lawyer's Road across the north. This plan is not exactly true north. You have Evans Road to the left. The building itself is, let me make sure I get this right, we're proposing 9,600 square feet of retail on the ground floor, the building which will front along Lawyer's Road with entry points from both sides of the building for retail, for various possible restaurants, fast casual, and other retail purposes. And above that, for two floors, is the office, which is 37,200 square feet. This is a very challenging site from a topography standpoint, as it kind of goes down, from plan view, from plan north to the stream, obviously everything drains to the stream. We went through a number of plan iterations. I know you guys have had a lot of conversations with the Messer team over the years. We looked at a lot of configurations also kind of during the height, if you will, of escalation of costs, when we were going through a lot of different variations of how to accommodate the parking, we realized that we were going to have to utilize a parking structure in order to meet the parking needs for the client. And so we looked at various configurations, numerous configurations, looking at the parking deck, where this actually had at one point a basement level. So we came to a conclusion of this which made it the most sense. Maybe some earlier versions you might have seen where there was actually a three-story parking structure at one point, which just became cost prohibitive because of all the facade treatments. So this is actually a, from a road standpoint, it just looks like a concrete parking lot. You won't actually see it. It's a tabletop deck, as we call it. You'd actually come down off of Lawyer's, which is a right-in, right-out, or will be a right-in, right-out, and you'll come down that road. And if you do go underneath the deck, it'll be a down ramp to go underneath. So from the surface of the road, it just looks like a parking lot. And then you'll have parking on the back and then access through the site from Lawyer's all the way to Evans. And then from a fire standpoint, the deck will be rated for the fire truck apparatus to go all the way across the top of the deck, and will meet all the code conditions for the deck and the building. As I mentioned earlier, the conditions of the building, the zoning code in order to requires that the building be fronting on both streets in a corner condition. From a topography standpoint, if you can kind of see how the snaking is on Evans Road, we could not make the driveway work to kind of come straight in because there's such a drop on Evans. So we had to push the building back in order to get enough room. And then from a deck standpoint, making that deck connect, because there'll be an elevator connection from the deck to the building for ease of access for the visitors of the deck and also the employees. And so we worked with John to look at a condition to create a very decorative element, a hardscape element on that corner, kind of a pedestrian node with some landscape and some maybe some knee wall scenarios. So this is still a little bit in the conceptual phase. So that's kind of helping those two conditions. And then from the parking standpoint, along the deck, again, as I mentioned, there's a 25% rule. The total amount of your frontage can only have a maximum, sorry, a maximum of 25%. We've exceeded that by almost, I think it's probably 50% of the site. So we're proposing a screen wall that is about 36 inches in height up on the upper end of the slope for the, and we'll see a cross section here. This is just kind of talking about the zoning that I've already spoken to. We'll come back to the zoning summary. We met all the setbacks. This is a quick sketch. We wanted to show that we thought kind of helped depicted the deck, as you can kind of see how it's all surface level. And then as you come down, kind of that upper right where you're coming under the deck. So again, you won't really know it's a deck per se until you get into the site. And you have a stormwater management that we've already addressed and gone through that with the county, and have gotten approval on that. This is what I want to show, the cross section. So if you see Lawyer's Road on the far right, and it's the cross section, kind of see the arrow pointing to the left. So the building's kind of ghosted in the background. We propose a screen wall near the sidewalk with some landscaping in between and as well as up front to screen the deck or the parking surface, kind of same, one of the same. So that's part of our condition that we're looking for to accommodate our exceeding the 25%. Here are the building elevations. You see the front and the rear. And then the sides. The, just to point out, the, when you enter into the building or address the building, you'll actually have a covered area. So it's not just a flat front. You'll actually be in a somewhat coverage. You can be under the, get out of the elements in event of rain. So just to kind of point that out, it doesn't really quite show up in the elevations, but they're recessed back a little bit. I think that's, that is it. I'll go back to the site plan, in case there's any questions.
Commissioner Long.
Two questions. The rendering shows a masonry building, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And this question's for John. On the sidewalk running from the entrance on Lawyer's down to Evans Drive, what's the width of that sidewalk?
The requirement is a minimum of five feet, and I believe that's what they have, is five. And it should be on the Lawyer's roadside, eight feet.
Okay. And, okay. All right. And it looks like some type of decorative finish. Is that true, or is that just the way the drawing's done?
For the screen wall?
No, sir, the sidewalk.
Oh, the sidewalk would be, a standard sidewalk. We will do some decorative finishes on the main entrance, kind of the main center of the building, on the front and the back.
But the other, it'll be concrete?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I believe we have, if I'm sure, it was an eight-foot sidewalk, Austin? Sorry, you moved your seat, sir. Yeah, so I think we have an eight-foot sidewalk. And the planting width is a little bit in excess of the minimum as well. So we got a little bit more room. Kind of, we were able to back the pedestrians off of the Lawyer's Road a little bit.
So you actually have gone to a wider sidewalk than is minimum required? Is that correct?
I believe so, yeah. I think, well, the minimum is an eight-foot, is it eight-foot along Lawyer's?
Yeah, the minimum's eight.
Yeah, so we've met the eight-foot.
Yeah, okay.
But the planting strip between the sidewalk and the back of curb is a little bit greater than the minimum.
Okay.
A little bit more buffer.
Commissioner Holton.
How many total parking spots will there be?
We have 242.
Okay. And then you said additionally, there'll be retail down on the bottom floor?
Correct.
And that can be, I mean, how many proposed individual retail spots are you looking at?
You kind of see the lines there. That kind of depicts the demarcations of each one. So what is that, six, eight on each side, or one, two, three, four, five, six, eight? Yeah.
Okay. And will this parking deck be available for public use for other events in town if need be, or is this going to be private?
This is private at this time. I don't know if, I think the owner has had some conversations, but nothing's been finalized.
Okay. And then what about, is there a stoplight requirement there for Evans Road?
Yes. So, good point on the traffic improvements. I forgot to get through that. So we have had a conversation with NCDOT. As you know, there's a concrete median along Lawyer's that has already been installed here recently because of the development across the street. NCDOT will require us to extend that. I think it's 50 feet beyond our driveway to make that a right-in, right-out only. They have also requested a light at that intersection of Evans and Lawyer's Road. So they're in discussions of finalizing that for a light at Evans. A turn lane onto Evans, oh, I'm sorry, go back to Lawyer's Road, extending or slightly modifying. We have enough stacking on a left turn lane from Lawyer's. We're just making some slight tweaks and moving Lawyer's just a little bit, making it a little bit wider right in front of the building. So you have a left turn lane that already is there. We're just improving it slightly, not a huge amount of changes. And then we'll, on Evans, we will, there's a strange kind of little bump on Evans that will be straightened out and aligning that with the adjacent road, and then allowing for a turn lane, a right-turn-only lane.
Gotcha. I think that's all I have right now.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton.
Patrick asked all my questions. Only other question I had was, do you have anybody looking presently leasing the first floor?
That would be an owner question. I know, have you had anybody interested in the first floor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure, if you've got somebody, I'm sure they'd love to know who.
It's not full, I'm sure.
Okay. That's all. Like I said, Patrick, you got my questions.
Mr. Henderson.
The rendering that you showed, now how many levels is it?
Just two. Technically, technically the top level and the bottom level. So it'll just be one underneath.
Okay.
Of the same size as the top.
All right. And the parking deck, is it attached, or is it separate? How do people get from?
It will be underneath where the building kind of connects in that corner. If you kind of see almost the far right of the building where the deck and there will be a stairwell as well as an elevator.
Okay.
We haven't quite gotten the deck designer fully engaged to have all the details worked out on the deck, but eventually that will kind of coalesce and have that attached. But it's not really depicted in this one.
Okay. That's all I have.
I guess.
Commissioner Holton, what kind of timeframe are you looking at from, if approved and everything, how long is this project going to take?
Our intent right now is if we have favorable results from this first meeting and our meeting with planning board, we've been directed to begin CDs actually kind of at risk during the rezoning process, so that during approval, we'll pretty much get approval and submit our CDs for construction documents. We've already been working with this, there's a GC that's already been selected. We've gone through numerous rounds of pricing. The owner's comfortable with that. I think there's still some discussions on the light, just in terms of the town and the nature of the type of light we'll use. So some NCDOT stuff, but I think by and large, they're ready to move forward fast and furious.
So are you looking 2024, 2025?
Probably will be an 18-month construction process with just kind of the current timelines. 18 months or less.
One clarification on the parking spaces. I forget the number that you gave us. What is the number of employees that are going to be brought from another nearby town to Mint Hill when this, when this move happens?
I mean, how many employees expected?
Approximately 100.
100.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
No, not at this time.
If nothing else, I'm going to now close the public hearing on ZC 23-1. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number seven, I'm now going to open the public hearing on ZC 23-2 filed by 8235FR-LLC for tax parcels number 139-011-09, 139-011-11, 139-011-12, you're grinning like you did this on purpose, 139-011-23, and 139-011-47 to request rezoning from IG CZD to IG to allow self-storage and vehicle storage, property located at 8227 Fairview Road. The applicant will state name and address, please. You have the floor.
All right. It's, my name is Tom Daniel, 401 West Park Court, Peachtree City, Georgia. I'm with Omni Consulting. We're the project managers for this facility. If you, I think most of you are aware, it's an existing, the first tax parcel you said was, is an existing self-storage with outdoor vehicular storage. Our owners bought that, plus the neighboring construction building and construction yard. And the goal and the purpose of this entire project is to, one, clean up, modernize, and the facility back in somewhat a good working order of, from a type B to a type A. We are proposing a 50,000-square-foot climate-controlled building out here. We're also proposing to close the entrance from Fairview that's current and make it a emergency entrance exit only. We will utilize a new entrance off the end of Mini Mack, past the fire department, as well as a new entrance. If you've been by there, there's an entrance that goes right between the existing storage and the construction building, the white two-story construction building. We're going to have an entrance in the back there as well. So we're going to try to move all of our traffic off Fairview and get it back away for public safety and for just ease of use from our clientele. The site plan, if you see, we're going to update, and we've already gotten approval from Mecklenburg County. We're going to upgrade and update the existing stormwater detention pond, improve all of the drainage on-site. There's some off-site drainage that, from the neighboring property that flows onto some of the neighboring homes, and we're going to reroute all of that through an internal central drainage system to try to help clean that up. I think they've already been out there doing a lot of cleaning and clearing on all the existing fencing, trying to make it not such an eyesore, pick it up, repair it, clean it up. And then ultimately, if we have a good conditional zoning with you, we'll proceed, excuse me, proceed forward with the two-story building. The other aspect of this is right where the two-story building is, is kind of the existing outdoor storage, if you want to call it that. And our intent is to obviously move all of that, clean it all up from behind the residences. The new vehicular storage, which will be vehicular only, we won't have construction material, we won't have unwield vehicles, it will all be mobile, will be located in the new area, which is behind the existing construction. Spacebar? Here is a rendering from, kind of looking from the end of Mini Mack, is what our building would look like. Obviously, we have some power lines, if you've been out there, but our goal is to build it within the slope. We're not going to go up. We're going to build it so by-level. So you'll notice that the park, the little bit of parking that we will have out by the new office, and all is located, it's only a 10-foot-tall building there. So we're not going to go vertical in the area because of the neighbors. And then it slopes, you know, to the rear, and we'll build into the slope going around. So you see, we have another view from the front, looking down the side, looking from the back. So you can see that we're building within and inside the topography. It helps with the drainage. It also helps with minimalizing the impact to the neighboring properties. I think that's just another one there. But, you know, basically, we're hoping that we've been through with Charlotte Utilities and got their preliminary approval. We've been working with Jonathan over at Mecklenburg County, working on all the environmental. We're good with them. We've been working with John and his staff. We know there's recommendations there, and we're willing to work with people, you know, with the staff here, and would like to get this project going. So I'll open it up to questions.
Mr. Henderson.
Uh, nothing right now.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton.
You said you're going to try to move the traffic flow off of Fairview. You still going to have the front gate on Fairview, though?
It will be there simply for fire department or emergency access. The gate will be there, but it'll have a knock box, and they will be the only ones, well, safety vehicles, police, fire will utilize that access.
And your exterior siding, it looks like it's partial brick. What's the other?
The rest of it is just going to be metal on the, on the three sides. We've got brick on the front with metal on the side, which is consistent with what's on-site.
And how many units are you looking at?
So a little over 200 units there.
And all of them will be climate-controlled?
All of them will be climate. We even have some that have exterior roll-up door, but it'll be climate-controlled.
And I was looking at your plans. Where's your parking for these people to have access to the?
For the units and stuff?
Yes, I saw the parking spots to the left, to the, it looks like to the left of the other units. So they'll have to walk from there over to those units?
To which unit? I'm sorry.
I'll show it in my paper here. Here's your building.
Yes.
And here's parking.
Right.
So they're going to walk over to this unit.
Well, they'll come to the, you mean, no, no, that parking that you pointed to that's behind the commercial is for RV and boat storage.
Okay.
The parking that is needed for the storage, we have about nine parking spaces right there by the office.
Okay.
And then we have wider drive lanes on either sides of, at the loading, and most people will park right there at the loading docks or loading zones and unload. We don't anticipate, I mean, typically, on a great day for us, you're looking at 10 to 15 vehicles in the facility.
And will these units be in different sizes?
Yes, sir.
And what are the sizes?
We have, in this particular building, we do not have any five-by-fives. We have five-by-tens, ten-by-tens, 10-by-15s, 10-by-20s, and 10-by-30s.
That's all for now.
Yes.
Mr. Holden.
So if I'm correct, based on what's already there with Mini Mack or Mod Box now?
Yes.
You won't even be able to really see any of this from Fairview?
I don't, I don't think so. I was out there today, standing at the intersection. I really don't believe you're going to be able to see much of any of this. Our hope is that with the storage of the, you know, for the RV and the boat, is that you can't. Because if you stand, we have a rise where the commercial building is now the white one, where the construction, and I don't see how you would be able to see that from Fairview or Mini Mack until you drove down.
And then will y'all be repairing Mini Mack Drive?
It's our understanding in conversations with staff that we'd be working with them to either repair or work with them, and then put, we're going to put a cul-de-sac down at the end for turnaround, because obviously it'll be good for our clientele, and it'd be good for city personnel and, you know, fire department as well. It'll give them, I know they have got a loop through theirs, but they'll give them a turnaround.
So the biggest expansion that you're looking to do is basically where the commercial building was and to put the RV parking over there?
Yeah, where the existing RV parking is, is the pink building, and that's where the majority, and then the, yeah, the storage is over there where, I don't know if y'all been there, but there was a big, you know, the construction company had all of their construction material there. So there's no trees. We're not taking down any trees.
So the property, it's fenced all the way around, correct?
Correct.
And with, is that fencing that goes, that would be visible from Fairview? Is that privacy fencing, or is that chain link?
We've got to work, we have not approached the staff on that. We want to do some improvements along Fairview that will include signage and including some upgrades to that fencing, but we haven't had a chance to work with staff yet on that.
Yeah. I mean, it's already there. That's my thing. It's just, it's one of those things that nobody wants to see it.
No, no. And we want to clean, we've been out there trying to clean up the landscape and get it, you know, but it's, now if we can get through this and we get positive, then we'll work with staff, because we'd like to have a sign there.
Yeah, and I think the entrance coming off of Mini Mack Drive is definitely the way to go, because that's the big feedback I hear from everybody, is the way traffic on Fairview gets backed up when somebody's turning in, so.
Yes. Yes.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Long.
One question, Mr. Daniel. The two entrances will have electronic gates, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And they will be set back probably in line with the original commercial building to the left?
The one that's, that will service the boat and RV, if you're looking at the site plan, it is all the way back. Your pointer's almost there. Go to the right. And then the other one will be back at the end of Mini Mack.
Very good. Thank you.
We want to, we want to give plenty of room, if you've got a long trailer RV, to get off the road.
Okay. Thank you.
And we work, you know, we talked to NCDOT and the county, and everybody was in favor of that. And the fire marshal wanted to keep the front, just because it's the way it is. He just wanted to have access if he needed it.
You had mentioned that we were going to enlarge and improve the stormwater detention pond.
That's correct.
And at some point in time, I think you said that there were some drainage issues that were affecting some of the neighbors.
Correct.
Can I assume that you've talked to all of the neighbors that are touching that property at this point in time or not?
I have not. I'm hoping that my staff has.
Okay.
But I know, we know by just field visits and talking with your staff and talking with Mecklenburg County, especially, you know, the western side, the northwestern side, that's where we're going to, that's an existing drainage well that we are going to just leave. And that's why I said we're going to redirect all of the drainage that comes off that commercial building and all off of the old lay-down yard where we're talking about putting the boat and RV. That's going to get rerouted through the middle of our property, back to our new stormwater pond. And we're doing that without touching the riparian. There's a creek back there, and so we've been working with Met County. We're going to leave the pond in place. That's going to be the first thing that we do.
Just looks like there's six or seven homeowners down along that back, about that property line. I would just hope that when you come back to us after you've been to the planning board, that we know that you've talked to all of them and that they're good with what's going on there.
I will make that my personal responsibility.
Thank you. Any further questions?
What kind of lighting is going to be provided?
It, you know, most of the lighting will all be night light-sensitive. It'll all be direct, direct down. We anticipate not putting any light poles up at all, just doing wall mounts, wall packs that are direct, the lighting down, because we don't want to impact the neighbors. We just need enough light around the doors and stuff for security. And from my understanding, it will not be 24/7, it won't be 24-hour access.
Oh, okay.
So.
One other question. One other question. Will this have a sprinkler system in it?
Yes, sir. The building will, yes. We're going to, we're working with Charlotte, but we will be, and the fire department will be extending the water line that's about halfway down Mini Mack. We're going to extend the eight-inch all the way down, put a new fire sprinkler system in there, and add another fire hydrant at the end of Mini Mack.
Any further questions? Thank you very much. At this time, we'll close the public hearing on ZC 23-2.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Item number eight, public comments. We have three people who have signed up to speak. I'm going to call you in the order. I'm going to call you in the order that you, uh, signed up. Please try to, uh, keep it around three minutes, if you would, please. And the first one is DJ Spiker. And if I mispronounce the name, but please give your name and address again, please, so if I butcher anybody's name, we can correct on the record.
Um, I'm DJ Spiker. I live at, uh, 12209 Ranburn Road, Charlotte, North Carolina, Min Hill, excuse me. And, uh, you guys are doing a little talk about Epcun, building that little thing over behind our houses there. And I just had some questions before you guys do make a decision. Has anybody looked at the traffic on Fairview, which by the way, does have a fire department? That yes, certain times of the day, there is a line of cars going past the fire department. If there is an emergency, how are you going to get the fire truck to the place? We do have three lanes going into two in that area. On the other end of it, we have five lanes going into two. If we're going to continue building, maybe what happened with Chick-fil-A might happen to happen over there. Someone's going to have to expand the road. The fire department needs it, the police department needs it, and God knows, the neighborhoods need it. Um, I noticed on the one plan that they had, they were taking out basically all the trees all the way down to the creek and they're going to put a retention pond at the end. Is there any way to keep some of the trees? You know, maybe go 30 feet back from the creek so that some of the original trees could stay? Yes, I understand we're into a, we got to plant trees after we build, but you and I are not going to be here when those trees are the size they are now. Plus the retention pond. Retention ponds are great. Is it going to be a real pond or is it going to just be a place where water sets? I have a pond in my backyard. I have no mosquitoes. If they put a retention pond back there like they normally do, we're going to have mosquitoes everywhere. Or is this going to be something like you have a water, you have a fountain out front? You probably have no bug problems here because the water's always moving. Are they going to put moving water in this? I can't say that we're just, we can't deny it, because we have to pick what we're going to do. We might as well face it, the world's expanding. If we don't get this approved, something else will get approved. Maybe we won't want to fight with that. This would be a better thing to put in there than let's say what happened on Lawyer's Road down there at the Gatsby. I'd hate for that to happen over there. Um, I don't know. I think there's just a little bit more thinking. The big thing is the traffic. I can't even pull out of my neighborhood. It takes 15, 20 minutes to get out of my neighborhood anymore. I've been there 29 years. I used to be able, I could close my eyes and drive out. Now it's the biggest waiting game in the world. I just want to make those small little facts about it. I don't know if I did anything or not, but that's what concerns me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, second is, I can't hardly read this. Is it David Horl? Is that correct? And you can correct that when you get up here, when you give us your address, please, sir.
It's a German name. It's hard to say.
Well.
Hurl.
Hurl, okay.
Um, my name is David Hurl. I live at, uh, 15117 Sustar Farm Drive. Uh, I'm a new transplant to, uh, this area and I live in an Epcun community. And I'm here to speak on their behalf or to, uh, laud what a great thing that they do. I have no connection to the company other than I bought a home. And I would offer to anyone here, if you want to see what they do, come by and see our place. It's right off, uh, Idlewild and Hooks Road. It's a gorgeous community. They didn't jam the houses together. There's a lot of empty space. There's walking areas and a gazebo and it's, it's really nice. I moved down here from New Jersey. Please forgive me, but, uh, because what they offered was just so compelling. And so I, I would just offer, there are 37 homes in the community we have now. It's not putting much of an overload on traffic or anything else. And it's a plus. It's a wonderful thing that they've given to this area and I think I would imagine that they would do the same in this new area. So I would just ask you, go down there and see what they've done. They didn't jam all the houses together. They created a really positive thing. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. And finally, Michael O'Connor, is that?
Yeah, you got that one right.
That's a first.
And David, just save me about a minute, because we're neighbors. I didn't even realize he was here, so.
Okay.
He shared half of what I was going to share. Uh, my name is Michael O'Connor. Uh, my address is 16024 Clear Creek Farm Road. I'm also in the, uh, I'm a new resident in the Epcun community, which is on the southeast corner of Idlewild and Hooks Road. I too am here on my own behalf, but wanted to speak real favorably as a very satisfied but new resident with the Epcun community. Uh, my wife and I built eight homes across the United States, three of which were in Charlotte. Uh, we built on Ray Road and then Ray Road got really congested. We moved over to Providence and that turned into Waverly. And now we've just, uh, settled in an Idlewild Road. Um, something we're really happy about, we, we were very selective. This is where we plan to stay, our forever home. Epcun has seven or eight different homes in this community or in, in Charlotte. They all have some common themes. They're all master planned. They're all very thoughtful about space, uh, public open space. Um, they, uh, they all do all the maintenance for all the landscaping, so they design, plant, and maintain it. Uh, I'm on a very small two-tenth of an acre. My corner lot, I have over 50 plants and trees. Uh, to Mr. Striker's point, they'll, they'll never be huge monstrosities, but thank goodness on the small lots that we are. And then with that, then there's, there's large open space, walking trails. There is a retention pond with moving water. Uh, that will be coming this summer, but there's a fountain, as you'd expect to see in every one. And overall, uh, it's my opinion that they're building something that's actually a really nice contribution to the community. We've all seen South Charlotte expansion and contrary to, you know, the McMansions and that, the huge sky rises with the, um, apartments and such, it's a really beautiful, subtle, uh, what I think is just very beautiful and just very pleasant and appealing. And I'm hoping you all will think, uh, that as well. A final thing, fully appreciating traffic and such. Uh, these are 55 and older communities. Uh, David and I are the youngest in the community, but, um, uh, most people in the area are retired, so we don't have the traffic issues during rush hour at the beginning and the end of the day. I don't believe there's any children in the neighborhood. There's certainly no school buses, so perhaps, uh, there's not the typical strain on the school system or some of the, uh, support that comes with younger children. So I think it's kind of an added asset and I hope you folks will keep all that in mind with your vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, we'll now close the public comments portion of the meeting. Item number nine, discussion and decision on ZC 22-6 filed by Epcun Communities for Tax Parcel Number 197-201-14 to request a rezoning from R to RCZD and B-G to allow a single-family subdivision property located at 8612 Fairview Road. I believe the applicant's present. John?
So the planning board met January 23rd and they had a favorable recommendation to you. And I will read this, the recommended consistency statement. As, this is the planning board recommended consistency statement. So ZC 22-6 is found to be consistent with the land use plan, the land use plan and sub-area plan. Calls for commercial use for the portion of fronting, the property fronting Fairview with the remaining parts plan for mixed residential. Mixed residential is an area characterized by moderate density development. It is comprised predominantly of single-family detached homes. Therefore, ZC 22-6 is found to be reasonable and in the public interest based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions this time? Where? Oh, no, no. Commissioner Long, go ahead.
John, and to Mr. Striker's question earlier when he spoke, we're showing in, in the shaded area, a 100-foot post-construction buffer. What does that mean?
The post-construction buffer is related to the post-construction ordinance and that is a required buffer from the stream area. So if you look here on this plan, I think it is in your packet.
It is.
Uh, let me actually get to the site plan. Okay, so you see here, here's the stream line, the blue line here. And then so from there, you have 100-foot of buffer area and that is an undisturbed area. So there, there are some exceptions that are allowed in this, but for the most part it is undisturbed. Exceptions would be something like utility, for example. Um, if it was a sewer line or something, that could be in there. But, uh, but there's your buffer area from the lots that are on, uh, Ranburn Road.
Correct. But when you said it's 100 feet, is that inclusive of the 35-foot, uh, I guess you'd call it a swim buffer?
Right, so if you see here, if you could see the monitor, so from, from this point to here is 100 feet.
And you said, did you use the term undisturbed?
Y-yes, sir.
Meaning there won't be a caterpillar out there taking down trees?
No, no, sir.
Okay. I have no further questions. Mr. Holden?
Where, where have we landed as far as from Fairview, um, with DOT requirements there?
So DOT, um, their preliminary comments was a right turn lane on Fairview. And we have spoke to, uh, NC DOT, um, and they have confirmed that they are only looking for a right turn lane, so down Fairview turn right there. Uh, we have discussed with them a median, because we know that they tend to use that on certain occasions. And they, um, they, uh, spoke to us about that and said that this development, this size development did not warrant a median. So at this point, it is a right turn lane only.
So that right turn lane that's going in, that'll be coming out of, uh, the 2.78 acres on the front then?
Uh, the, the right turn lane when they put it in, actually it appears that it was within the right-of-way. I don't believe.
It is.
Yeah, was it all the right, yeah, so that was all within the right-of-way.
Okay. And then there is a pedestrian crosswalk going in?
Yes, sir. So they will, uh, they have agreed to, um, have a mid-block crossing, crosswalk, painted crosswalk to get them to the park. We're going to try to align it where there's already an existing open in the gate there. So we're going to try to get them to align that. And they have also agreed to place a flashing, little, uh, flashing light for, for pedestrian crossing. And they've agreed to do that.
Yeah, and I know during the planning board meeting, there was a lot of talk about safety with that pond and I think the fence, there is a fence going up around the pond. Is that what I saw?
Correct. And they agreed with that and that is your, they will have a fence, uh, may have the old plan here. But yes, they have agreed, it should be in your packet. You should have the revised plan, but there is a fence that will go around this pond.
And just with the one residence concerned about the standing water, is this going to have a fountain? Is it going to be movement or?
I, yeah, typically there are, um, there are things to try to prevent mosquitoes, but I don't know if, are you doing a founding fountain? Yes, so they have a fountain.
Perfect. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
Again, a lot of my questions are asked. The fence, what type of fence will that be? Is it going to be a chain, excuse me?
My name's Ken Cordos. I'm the regional president with Epcun. The fence, we haven't, um, locked into any type of material. Typically, it would be, um, something similar to, uh, uh, four-foot aluminum rail type fence or something of that nature.
I'm sorry, I don't understand aluminum rail. I'm used to chain links or wood slatted fences. What's a?
It's, it's, um, it, it looks like thin pickets, um, typically about four inches apart. Um, it would be four-foot high, um, similar to, uh, if you've been out of Min Hill, we have some fencing of that nature as well out there.
Okay. That's all for right now.
Okay. Mr. Henderson?
The, um, other residents from the other community has talked about how great and wonderful it is. I'm, I'm curious to know how that community's design and everything compares with this design. I mean, it's almost twice the size of the one that they are referencing, but are there any similarities there? You know, how does that compare, the, the one on Idlewild and Hooks Road? How does that compare to, uh, what you're seeking to do at Courtyard Sequel Park?
It's, uh, it's very similar. Our concept is to go ahead and have smaller lots. Um, our typical home buyer does not want a large lot that they have to maintain. So what we do is we have a smaller lot, but we don't ask for any additional density. So we have a lot more open space that we provide in our communities, um, walking trails, things of that nature. We typically have wet ponds in our community as a, uh, a feature, um, with the, uh, fountain in the pond. And so it's going to be very similar to what you see out there right now at Min Hill.
Anything, brother?
I got one. You were talking about amenities. What will be the amenities there?
Uh, the amenities will be, um, clubhouse, uh, you're referring to this?
Yes.
Yeah, there'll be a clubhouse, there'll be a, um, swimming pool, um, and there'll be, um, a pickleball court.
Okay. And this is age-restricted, correct?
Yes, yes. Yeah, 80% of our homeowners will be 55 or older.
Okay. That's all for now.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, I will entertain a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Min Hill Planning Board and is read by John a few minutes ago.
I'm going to make a motion to accept it with the amenity of the, um, changes asked for.
In the consistency statement?
Consistency statement, yes.
And what were those changes that were?
Oh, wow, they were, uh.
The changes that he read.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I'm asking for, is a motion for what he read to either accept it or change it.
That's correct.
All right, so you're going to, a motion to accept it?
As was presented.
Okay. The second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the consistency statement? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I'll entertain a motion on decisions on ZC 22-6.
Motion to approve, correct? Is that, you're waiting on a motion to approve? All right, I'll make the motion.
To approve. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion?
Yes, sir. I do this guardedly, Mr. Mayor, because I, I'm not happy with the traffic, uh, resolutions that have been presented, but I am glad there's a D cell right turn lane and, uh, I just hope we're not proved wrong about the conflict of 218 in this project.
I'll share, uh, Commissioner Long's, I would have liked to have seen a medium in between the two lanes where people could turn left, at least wait till traffic pass through, but the DOT is not in favor of that. Uh, the bright spot of that is it is a restricted neighborhood and I do don't think people will be coming out during the rush hour or in the evening. Uh, and keeping in mind, most of the traffic through that is from Union County and we have no control over that, but we do understand that is an issue and I'm not happy with it[1773.51] it myself.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, you know, I really wish that there was a way I could see the other property to kind of compare, traffic, you know, and everything, because it's about half, half the size of this, this property. So, you know, I mean, I'm not trying to prolong anything, but I just, it would be good if I could kind of see it and just say, okay, well, here's a model that is pretty accurate to what the residents who are living there are saying. Well, two of the residents, and of course, the other resident opposed to it, but, and then the traffic issue.
Thank you, I'm sorry, last.
And then the proposed traffic portion, so.
I have a motion and a second. Do I have any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number ten, discussion and decision on ZC 22-7. Well, I'm going to mess this one up big time. Filed by Lesharon Enterprises and Holdings for Tax Parcel Number 135-417-47, to request a rezoning from RCZD to AO-CZD, to allow two commercial office buildings, property located at 7135 Lebanon Road. I believe the applicant's present, John?
Yes, the planning board met January 23rd, has a favorable recommendation for ZC 22-7, and they have the following recommended consistency statement. ZC 22-7 is found to be consistent with the land use plan. Land use plan indicates office employment for the property. Office employment is described as mixed-use areas targeted as a primary location of job-generating uses in settings that meet today's workplace expectations. Therefore, ZC 22-7 is found to be reasonable and in the public interest, based on the information presented and reviewed with this petition.
Do we have any questions for John or the applicant? Commissioner Henderson?
Is this structure attached to the existing structure, or is it separate?
It's separate.
Two separate. And how much space is between the two?
You said two buildings here?
The two there?
The one there, the previous one to the new ones?
Yeah, with the aerials, do we have or not? The applicant, can they weigh in on it? This aerial photo doesn't have.
You know offhand, I mean, one inch is thirty feet, and that looks, that looks about fifteen feet, I'm going to.
Please give us your name and your address, and then we'll get you answering questions. How's that?
David Clausman, 2923 South Tryon, Charlotte, North Carolina.
Thank you.
The buildings are probably fifteen, twenty feet separation between the two, approximately.
Yeah, one inch equals thirty, and that's about a half-inch, so yeah, about fifteen feet.
But you're talking about from the existing building?
Right.
She's talking about the young and polite dentist office behind you.
Oh, that's. Oh.
They got setbacks, don't they, John, no matter what?
Dr. Morris, the new building here, you're asking?
Yeah.
Dr. Morris is, it looks about the same, about fifteen, probably, which his building's not showing on this aerial, but it looks about fifteen feet.
Well, they got setbacks, don't they, John? It's got to be further than fifteen feet.
Fifteen off the property line, wouldn't they? So it'd be thirty feet.
One. Here, let's look at where that building's at.
So this one's going to have a fifteen-foot setback, presumably that would have the same at least, it should be at least thirty feet between. And there's the building, but obviously, that's what's there now, probably you're talking about. There it is.
I can't tell you exactly what that is, but.
What's the?
That's what, I'm going to zoom into your, so you've got, you've got fifteen feet on his end, and it looks like maybe fifteen, twenty feet from the, so you're, yeah, you're looking at probably about forty feet, maybe, thirty feet, forty feet? Okay.
And is that building going to have additional parking as well? I mean, like, where's that parking?
For which building? All the parking is in, in front of both those buildings there, that'd be the extent of the parking.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. All the parking that's shown right there in the kind of middle of the site, that'll be the parking for both buildings.
Okay, and how many spaces is that?
I want to say there's total eighty-two, eighty-six, somewhere in that range? I don't remember off the top. Ninety, there you go, thank you.
Okay, nothing else?
Mayor Pro Tim Dalton?
These are both commercial, are they both going to be designated for medical?
The first one would be, I think, dentist and orthodontist, kind of, I think pediatric. The second one is, there's no tenant yet, so just kind of general office. I'm not sure what the, if it'd be medical or if it'd just be office for the second building.
But it will be office space, not retail space?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I've got the same issue I had on Fairview, that's an extremely busy road, especially in the mornings and afternoons, and that's from three o'clock to after six, seven o'clock. I came through there last night, night before last at seven-thirty, and they were still back up from Lebanon Road. You've got, looks like DOT has got a media coming in off the left into the building, is that a medium?
No, there's a hundred-foot left turn lane into the site, and then there's a hundred-foot kind of decel right lane into the site from lawyers.
So if I'm turning out of the parking lot, turning left, going back towards Independence High School, is there a medium there?
No, just a kind of a striped pavement area, not a dedicated lane.
I would really like to see at least a section of that, I don't want an acceleration lane, but I would like a place where people could turn out and be able to park in that intersection until there's a space to get out.
Okay, we can take a look at that.
That's all I've got for now.
Commissioner Holden?
During the planning board, there was a lot of discussion with that left-turn lane to pull in there, because I know that when you're going the other direction, there's already a left-turn lane to turn left onto Lebanon, and there was discussion, did we find out what the distance was between Lebanon and this?
I don't remember, we are meeting what DOT requirements, is it a hundred-feet, a hundred-twenty-five-foot taper, not to impact the existing turn lane onto Lebanon? I think there's a little bit of restriping, but it doesn't impact the existing lane.
So there is room there to accommodate both?
Yes.
All right, I think that was the main thing with that, like I say, you've got the right-turn lane going in there with the deceleration, so I'm fine with that, I just think it's going to be a perilous act if you try to turn left out of that place, but.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I got.
Commissioner Long?
I would just echo what Commissioner Holden said, and I stated that when this came to the earlier hearing. I'm a big advocate of commercial properties, but this is going to be interesting with the interest and aggression.
Any further questions of the applicant or John? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to accept or modify the consistency statement as presented by the Min Hill Planning Board and read by John.
I'll make a motion to accept consistency statement as presented by the Min Hill Planning Board, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, do I have any further discussion on the consistency Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes. Item number B, motion and decision on ZC 22-7.
Make a motion to approve ZC 22-7?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Item number eleven, other business and council matters. Commissioner Long?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Holden?
No, sir.
Tim Dalton?
Just thank you to Chief Hatley and his crew for the police banquet we attended this past weekend. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Get out to what Commissioner Dalton said.
Couple things, we had our retreat this past weekend, for you that weren't aware of it, and we work on long-range planning, and we work on issues that we think the town needs to work on, and one of the issues seems to be on how is the best way to get the word out of things like meetings and rezonings and all of that kind of thing. So staff let us know that with the new website changes we've made recently, there's a box down in the right-hand corner that has a box for e-notify, am I, is that right? I don't want to misquote that, says e-notify, and you can click on that link, and if you'll go to that link, sign up with your email address and your phone number, every time there's a change for zoning, the application for zoning, any things that we, if we update current events, our Friday night fun nights and that kind of thing, thank you. Down here, e-notification.
It's actually at the top there, too. It's at the top.
Okay, you can sign up to do that, so I didn't, I wasn't familiar with it myself, so I can't expect all the citizens to be familiar with it, so I went on there myself and signed up Saturday morning, and I already got three notifications this week, stuff that was going on. Now luckily, I knew they were going on, because it had to do with this meeting tonight. But I think it's something that we need to share with our neighbors and our friends and, and everybody else that we talk to. In today's world, as you can tell, I'm slightly older than the two guys that got up and spoke, by the way, earlier, that were the youngest guys in our neighborhood, I'm not the youngest guy in my neighborhood. But we used to read the newspaper, and we knew everything that was going on, and I see a couple of you out there nodding your heads, yes, so you're of the same age, but now, now we communicate in so many different ways, so please share that every chance you get. We are going to have a video clip coming out on our social media pages soon, if it hadn't already, I didn't see it today, if it did, I missed it. And it's a video to show everybody how to sign up, so share it with your friends as well. Only other comment I want to make, and I've been making this comment forever, I appreciate the people that showed up tonight to speak to public comments, whether, whether they're for or against, that doesn't make any difference to us up here, we're always wanting citizen input. We appreciate the emails that we have, and I've received some phone calls, and I appreciate those as well, so we can't make these decisions based on what we go out and look at, and we miss it all the time, so please keep giving us that input. Anybody have anything further at this time? If not, we're going to go to closed session, we had a closed-session meeting last month, and we have to go to closed session to approve the minutes from the closed session. We do not plan to come back to this meeting and make any announcements, so we will adjourn from closed session. Thank you all very much.